First.
Up and running.
It's all rise to the pledge.
My pledge, you'll need to do the flag. I would say, sir, America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justly.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda if there isn't any addition.
Can I make that motion?
Second.
You have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, put the minutes from June twenty-third.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And you opposed, and so approved. General public concerns.
I'll tell you, thank you, got that guy, you know, we're about to spray the people.
Yeah.
Spray the island and all that.
Oh, good.
Killed it all, so if you drive by.
You know, it's amazing you get the right stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the aqua friendly stuff, so.
Good.
So I did take care of that. Now I want to add your insurance to this guy.
Scott's coming, you can. Okay, say anyone else? All right, uh, yeah, getting right into you.
First off, thanks for your, the use of your pickup and air conditioning that works very good.
Yeah. Dave said he had a few treats on the floor in there.
Well, he left a box that had a few handfuls. There was a couple of kids when I took it back up there that were sitting out there and I thought, no, I'm gonna let the guys have two handfuls of rolls. There was probably that many boxes up on Main Street.
Yeah. That's a good turnout time. Yeah, I mean, even everybody that goes up to our yard to watch the fireworks and light off their own fireworks, I mean, this year was probably the cleanest that our yard has.
Yes, to be had a lot of litter to pick up afterwards.
We didn't this year, so.
I made a comment when I was leaving.
I'd like to say.
Quite a few people sitting there and they said something and I said, as long as you're careful and pick up your mess.
Yep. Yeah, every, everybody, this, like I said, this was the cleanest that our yard has ever looked, so I appreciate those people that did come and and watch, because I know in, in years past, I mean, we'd spend, we'd have half a dozen people walking around.
Really?
Morning after to pick up, so.
Well, Bruce told me to pick up, I pick up.
Well, they were just, they were just sitting there and I pulled in with the tip and they kind of looked at me and something and I said, as long as you pick up your mess, you, you don't have problems.
Yes, yeah. Uh, the first item that I've got on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the counties right away with Creek Enterprise. Uh, this is to stand up a, uh, phone cabinet up by Mike Jacobson's place, uh, just east of his place on One Thirtieth and Delaware. There's a phone cabinet that fell over, so.
He was asking me about that and I said we would, thank you.
Yeah.
And he told about that, so.
Creek's done plenty of work for Lumen lately. We've got their insurance and everything on, everything's in.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay, first and a second, any more discussion on the four by the court? Something like paperwork.
I assume there's more than that, that's what they have listed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now we have an award project, um, is a blacktop service that we talked about last week.
Yeah, and I think on, on your agenda, I had the wrong project number listed, but it is the project that was last week for pavement widening. FM dash TSF CO forty-six, parent ninety-one, uh, double dash seventy-four, forty-six, so. This is the Valberdeen Hill, um, Avery's Hill and the two curves in Rutland, south of Rutland. Uh, the pavement widening, wider, edge line striping, uh, rumble strips, so. Um, blacktop service, as you guys know, last week was our long bidder and, uh, the numbers and everything checked out, so. It'd be my recommendation to award the project.
That was for a hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred sixty-six, right?
Yes, and seventy-six cents.
Oh, there is only a seventy-six. It's two dollars. Okay, I'll make that motion to approve for a hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred sixty-six and seventy-six cents.
Started it. We have a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Got it, so worries.
Uh, construction updates, the over replacement east of Thor, uh, there should be moving out equipment today and possibly tomorrow. Um, we'll get some loose gravel signs installed and some type-two barricades on either side of the actual gravel patch uh, put in place before we open that road. Um, we got all the box set on Vanillas Bridge Replacement last Wednesday. They started backfilling on Thursday, we're hauling dirt to them this morning, so it's a chance that'll be open by the end of the week as well, so.
Okay. There was tile hemorrhaging. They were kind of just coming out the bank, you couldn't even see the tile on, I believe, on the Thor project, one on the south side was on the east side, and one on the north side was on the west side. There's just hemorrhaging down the bank, you couldn't even see the tile, but, um, the last week, one of the old men looked down and took pictures of it. That's why I was just pulling it up so you buy pictures of it. But anyway.
Yeah, um, that's all been installed and fixed now, um.
Yeah.
Were there intake, brand-new intakes in the ditch yet?
No.
Then they hadn't even connected the tiles yet.
Yeah. It was, yeah, those pipes were there, I suppose they got buried when they were doing their work, so then I had to re-up them up. Just recycle it, you see both of them. It's a start it over. See the one on the, you see the one and then the other one, you gotta let clear to the left to see it. I think they got both of them. I don't know if they, if they quit hemorrhaging when they didn't see them and they wouldn't even know they were there.
Hmm, yeah, no, so the, the one at the very end of this is the one that comes from the lagoon site.
Okay.
Um, contractor did end up having to tear out about twenty-foot fence to be able to get in there and dig back to a good, good joint and and replace a section of pipe. On the north side, there was driveway pipes as well as, uh, tile lines that were running in the shoulder or the actual westbound lane of that roadway that they hooked into and dumped out on the north side.
Well, versus him leaving and having to come back, it's, I just thought I'd say something in case, yep, it never got found. That's all.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Good deal.
Anything else for me?
You already got the big letters.
That was last week.
Well, it's on our agenda, so that's what I thought, why the hell's that?
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Yeah, that was last week's.
All right.
I wondered about that.
I did too, because we got another one I didn't know about.
No.
Okay.
I'd be surprised, maybe there's somebody that got from bibletting on.
A week late? A week late?
All right.
Well, let's see if anything else going on. Oh, there's a trailer up on um, Braggy Hill. It's somebody, some scrapper, the trailer axle broke and it's laying next to our pile of dirt. I didn't know if you were aware of that. Oh, he just. And it's full.
On Avery's?
Yeah.
Is it our friend on one sixty-nine?
Oh, that guy? No idea, but the trailer's broke, or the axle was actually broke on, is halfway up on our pile and it's sorted down way down. I don't know if it's still there or we.
It's like a little bumper hitch trailer or something?
Bumper hitch trailer, but it's fairly good-sized one.
Yeah.
Anyway, I seen law enforcement coming south on it, or maybe he already looked at it. I don't know if he did or not.
Okay.
Well, sorry about the president.
All right, we'll try and locate who the landowner or who the property owner is and.
I don't know. Yeah, and junkers, they should just unhuck the trailer when they get to the junkyard, just leave it all.
Typically, the trailers are pretty junky too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we've closed out the, one of the FEMA projects from last year, so.
Okay.
You know.
All right.
I'm considered down here with a female, it's up in place on file the policy for FEMA projects that has nothing to do with you.
It's for change.
It's during June. All right.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Have a good week.
You too.
You gonna be in your office later?
Yeah, I'll be around.
I'll stop her on.
All right.
Okay. All right, well, we can go down to some of this other stuff we have down here. We'll skip over the first one. We'll go to, uh, boom, special class C retail alcohol license for the Hubble County Cultural Society.
Well, may just do this during the fair, right?
Yeah.
It's fourteen-day term.
All right.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I second it. Okay, we have a first and a second, any more discussion?
It's in order, right?
Looks like it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Prove resolution, twenty twenty-five oh seven dash six-seven point one, a resolution approving incorporating money for fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six. You want to go through this, Chris? This is your stuff.
This is just an annual appropriation of funds for the budget year twenty-five twenty-six and they are listed as individuals, um, departments and funds.
So basically it moves it into their fund account so they can spend it.
Correct. We do this every July, don't we? Isn't this something that we have to do every July?
Okay, Dan, I got a question. Did we decide resolutions we had to do? Is every county is different?
Different, every county is different, you know, true.
Well, I assumed that
Yep.
we were gonna do the roll call, that's how she is on the
Yep.
on your sheet here, so.
You have a first and a second on this yet?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. That will do, roll call vote. Bruce?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I?
Aye.
I am also an a, so. Resolution oh seven oh seven, that point one is approved. Excellent. Okay, we'll move down and do twenty twenty-five oh seven oh seven point two. Uh, that's Community Betterment Fund.
These are the funds that are collected through the, um, local option sales tax, the thirty percent that goes towards the betterment projects that are listed right here. The same as last year's, it's the most part. There's some adjustments.
We don't know where this money actually gets spent. We just put it into a fund and then they use it out of it, then I'm assuming that's what we do.
We pay them.
Spent, transferred to, or paid them. It gets paid to them and then they use it.
Yeah, it just goes to them and then they use it in their budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Without, um, they have to come and make a plea, like, um, the Livermore Pool. It came and and same thing with the libraries, they always come and do a presentation.
Fair game.
Fair came, yeah.
Okay.
So did CFR, so did MOPP.
Yeah.
Offits.
Mm-hmm. Of anybody that didn't come.
Did this get increased this year or does it remain the same? I can't remember if we give anybody anything at the beginning. Uh, the only one I know that went up was, uh, the economic growth for Humboldt County, I want to move five percent.
Libraries went up.
And the libraries.
We changed that from
Okay.
Ministeria.
Right.
To Blue Pantry to
Yep.
Elder Bridge went up slightly.
That's per capita kind of type thing, isn't it?
Um, Elder Bridge, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is financed out of the general fund or general basic or all the above?
The lost.
From the lost.
From the lost.
All your whole options.
Great south part.
This, Sambit goes to secondary roads and then Sambit goes to, this is where we do our community betterment projects is from the lost money. And that's voted on, what, every ten years?
Yes, I believe so.
I think it's every ten years.
Uh-huh.
And we just did it.
Two years ago.
Two years ago on Rutland.
Yeah.
Wasn't it you guys that agreed?
You don't have to rub it in.
No, I was just saying, they didn't vote.
Yeah.
We brought it back and so that they could redo it.
Nobody showed up.
Nobody showed.
All you needed was one vote.
One vote.
You voted.
So we ended up.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know you wouldn't. You're good at that.
I didn't know.
It just happened, I mean.
Well, thank God we can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, we did it, it cost a little bit, but.
They gave us approximately sixteen thousand dollars. How do we get out of that?
Too much to give up.
Do we have motions on that?
Yeah, yeah, they have.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll search them. Okay, let Mike do it.
There's some mic. Any more discussion? Hearing done, all.
Roll. Roll.
Aye.
Looks like Sandy.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I?
I.
I see Eric is also on nine. Motion carries.
Why? But I can't.
No, it's nothing we can ask.
What do you want to ask?
Why does seventy percent go to secondary roads? That's quite a bit, I bet you.
That's how it was voted.
That's how it's voted on, that's how it was written up.
Yep.
It could be changed by
Yeah.
a vote.
Yeah, we just have to, yeah, and that is time we could, when the, the lighting company
whatever.
Yeah.
And that's how it was virtually set up.
Okay, that was my only question.
That would be, and I, that would be nice to have for carpeting upstairs, I mean, if we could use. Yeah, there'd be a lot of things that we, we could use it for. Generator. True. Mm-hmm. Okay. Now I'll move down to the auditors' quarterly report. Choose.
In the quarter, there was transfer fees of eleven hundred dollars, um, Mattson Plaps, which is the pot books, was in handy that we received. We don't have postage really or any other elections besides city school election and I'll be interested.
I'll make that motion to accept and place on file the auditors' quarterly.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same motion carries. Was small, it's hard to read.
I know.
Gotta get your bifocal just right.
Maybe some figured. Okay. Uh, yeah. You can explain some of it to us a little more detail. We're gonna do the treasurer's annual report, noon thirtieth. This is the one guy every cheater's for.
I know.
We go back to that resolution number two, where most of those CFR and I know that, uh, Upper Des Moines, most of those people all increased their asks and I think that we we basically kept them the same for
A lot of them.
A lot of them because we just were that tight, so. Hopefully our services remain same for thirtieth.
Well, this is another reason to push shop local, because it's everything that gets it's sold and taxed here, we get.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hello.
Well, we have your annual report front of us and we just felt there's anything you wanted to highlight or mention?
No, it's
Good news or scary news or?
Well, it's pretty much the same as before. I mean, we're still sitting okay, um, dispersments follow that down to the forty-four. I mean, we're I mean, we're still okay, guys, so. Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary, so. Do you have any questions on any of it?
Well, dispersments are less than everybody knows, that's good.
Yes, that's always, that's always a good thing.
Yeah. Yeah, if it was more, I'd definitely be letting you know before now.
Yeah.
No, I mean, we're still doing okay, it's.
Delinquent property taxes, we eventually will catch up on them.
Um, we actually don't have that many delinquents, um. Ashley and I, we are trying to work on some of those that are really behind in the past, trying to figure out if we can get people that own properties beside it to take them, so, but we're, I'm working with a couple people, trying to satisfy them, but until I can get something worked out with them, I won't bring it to you yet. So, and then we have some.
Is that, are they mostly just abandoned them properties?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's nobody living there and nobody's gonna be there.
Tax sale either.
Uh-uh, no. Some of them are on tax sale, but we have them as a county tax sale. Most private people won't even mess with them just because they're all run down and old and they don't want them.
They don't want, it's an expense, so.
Right, right, so.
Fix up or tear down.
Yeah.
Either way.
Yep, so I'm trying to work with some of the people on that. We're just going one at a time here and trying to figure that out, so, but, I mean, it's not bad.
Oh, great.
We can hopefully get those taken care of, so.
I see.
But yeah.
Yeah, it is that much, sixty-six hundred bucks, because.
Anything else? Yeah, you mean in the delin, delin, but yeah.
You asked what the grain handling tax was, I assume that was toward elevators.
It's the elevator, yeah.
We staying busy with our driver's license?
Yes, we are. Even more so, as long as people show up.
Is it running a little slow there and, I mean?
Yeah, Lindsey's actually doing a really, really good job. She's really personable with the people and that, so, um, it would be nice that maybe sometime in the future that they would consider raising the, what we get in the counties, but the only way that's gonna happen is if they actually raise driver's license, which it's time, in my opinion. It's been four dollars a year for, I've done driver's license since ninety-eight and even before that, it's always been four dollars a year.
That's the legislature, right?
Yeah, it is, yeah, and I hope that our motor vehicle group for the treasures kind of approach that to see if that'll, but.
Well, what's a two-tier assessment limitation?
Yeah. Has to do with the businesses.
Yeah.
It's going away. Is it the two-tier?
Days.
Oh, two-tier stays, commercial is leaving.
It's, um.
Commercial and industry is gonna be gone.
They get taxed on the first hundred fifty thousand dollars, the same as a residential and, um, above that is a different rate.
I've read that.
Lower or higher or?
Higher.
Business thoughts, higher.
What are trip permits? What are what? Trip permits?
Oh, those come from the state, um, so it's heavy use, yeah, so they now have to apply.
Something like that, the wind turbines go through, the blades or anything that's oversized or permitted.
Yeah, so that has to go through the state, then the state sends it to us and
and you, yeah.
And then, yeah, it's miscellaneous, it goes into Ben's.
They do the
Accounts.
I think they check with Ben to make sure that everything is all has to be on a certain road, you can't leave the.
There is a route.
Route.
I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Under, under auditor's warrants.
Okay.
I mean, I, I mean, I almost thought, like, I didn't realize that you know, it may be better than this whole warrants, you know, you know, suppose, well, it's a whole little bit of warrants.
Mm-hmm.
Wonder why is that affect?
I don't know.
Oh, well, we're an outstanding, outstanding order.
Oh, outstanding is
And you're on, you're on fifty-four.
That haven't gone.
Gone through.
Like, the auditors pay them, but they haven't come through the treasures.
Oh, that's, they're not actually holding the warrants.
No, no, that'd be more like payments, we've paid them out. I mean, we do have some that.
All right.
We're still.
Because I, I understood why.
The money's down there, but they just haven't been dispersed, right?
It has, it's been dispersed and paid through the tre, or the auditor's side, but they haven't redeemed that check.
They haven't cashed them at the bank.
Come through, or they haven't cashed them at the bank.
Is there any in there for rimers?
I was looking, I didn't see you, some of Bruce.
They could take some of that four hundred dollars, I mean. Well, with that, any other?
You guys have any others?
I do not.
I make a motion to accept treasures. Daniel?
Let me ask, Bob, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, treasurer's report is accepted.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
You too.
Okay, I hope this Diana's up.
She is unavailable right at the moment, so.
All right.
Hers is pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah.
That one's a little bit of a print, it sees you.
Yeah, it's easier to read, absolutely. It's a little bigger, kinda.
Yeah. That, well, I make that motion for the seven place three quarters on five hundred. Who we?
Well, second.
Okay, we have a first and a second on the quarters, quarterly report. Any more discussion? Or any none in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now we have the set in place on file the policy for FEMA projects.
Very close, oh, yeah.
This is, I seen it here. I have it, this one.
This is short. It says short.
Yeah.
This is a policy, it's gonna be, yeah, it says the policy is in place and adopted, standard operating procedure, but we didn't see the policy.
Oh, there it is.
Who's saying, oh, oh.
She just brought it in.
So basically, what it is, is we're still working on the two thousand nineteen FEMA closeout. And all right.
He thinks you're going to the floor.
You know what? You should just carry that out to dance for it and dump it.
Yeah. Um, so they're just down to the final trying to get it closed out. There's been a few different rule changes as it's gone. They just want to make sure that the scope of work was followed, which it was, we had all of the different direction on it, um, they sent us the GPS coordinates and everything. They wanted to make sure that you guys were a part of that, which you're a part of all of it and um, she just thought, I've been working with a FEMA agent and she just thought that if we had this as a policy that, you know, it has been followed, it is adopted, that you, you know, you guys follow the scope of the work and work with the contractors and the sites so that you know what's going on in, I guess, the whole scheme of everything. It's just another, um.
A piece of brick.
It, yes.
Another hoop.
Another hoop. There's been a Another hoop. There's been a lot, but we're hoping this is down to the end of it and then our cutoff date is July fourteenth, so. We're hoping that we've gone through all of the hoops as of July fourteenth to get it totally finalized. It's been a long, kind of a long drive.
Some other things that Ben's been going through out there, that's.
Same. It's, there's been a lot, a big change in.
We did a lot of repair work to our ditches from twenty nineteen.
Yeah, a lot, and, yeah, and they've gotten a lot of paperwork through it, but it just seemed like. Steps have changed as it progressed, so hopefully this is the final step on it. I'll make that motion to accept and place on file the FEMA projects.
Well, second. Okay, we have a first and a second, any more discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It was, it was approved. Okay, now, back up to the property side.
Thanks, Terry.
Good morning. Alright.
This is a change we made to our insurance policy.
Yeah, this is one of the discussion items we had on the cyber liability piece, the policy, right? As we have it, at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cyber liability. And ICAP had offered. The opportunity to have a million dollar worth of coverage and. So I said I would get the details and come back so you guys can decide and really, you know, the front couple pages is just. The excess, so what, how they work it is the base policy has the two hundred and fifty thousand. And, um. The, and then what they do is they put a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar excess, so that's why you see on the front cover, there's the excess. So really, the back two pages are the nuts and bolts of it. And they're identical, it's just that the very back page shows the base coverage. Uh, what they call Schedule B, underlying coverage, that's where all the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, items are. And then the Schedule A to the left of it. Shows it adds the other seven hundred and fifty thousand in excess of the first two hundred and fifty, so the combination gets us a million. So it's identical, there's nothing, um, additional that the excess provides. Other than putting the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on top of the underlying schedule. So you can see it's broke out by third-party liability. Any multimedia, uh, security and privacy liability, I'm, I'm guessing the second line item is gonna be the biggest. Thing here, if, if we have a security breach, privacy breach, and we're gonna owe, um. You know, some, some credit monitoring and things like that to our constituents, things like that, um. There, the PCI DSS, that stands for payment card, it's payment card industry data security standard, so. You know, there may be something if we accept card payments for certain things and we don't. Secure those transactions correctly, uh, potentially there, so. Um, and then the first party items down below, that's our, um, breach event cost coverage. System failure coverage, our cyber extortion, cyber crime coverage, those things, those highlighted items would. Would be our first party, what it would take to. Take care of a, a breach and get our data back in order, um. Any kind of cyber extortion, so that's the ransomware piece where they lock us down and demand five hundred thousand or something to, to open us back up. Yeah, and then our, uh, you know, cyber crime, that's where they get a hold of. Some money transfer capabilities and try to do some. Uh, wire transfer, those sort of things, so. That's, that's the schedule, if anybody has any questions, more, more detail of what each, any of those individual items, I brought the. The, the actual underlying policy, I just made one copy, there's thirty-four pages of, you know, a lot of legal technical contract stuff, but. There is a paragraph that kind of relates to each one of those items, um, on there, so.
In review, Chris said last week the two hundred and fifty wouldn't. Cover much, so his recommendation was to go with the million, which. In today's day and age, probably. What's for you too?
All the. Computer servers and software and all that stuff.
Yeah, I know, and some of those things, you know, some I could point out, some of the places where it says no coverage. You know, one of them, the post, pro- post breach remediation cost coverage, so that's. That's, this policy wouldn't necessarily pay to fix the problem from happening again. So what that's saying is we'll, we'll do our breach event costs and coverage, but now if there's an extra piece of. Software or another little patch that we need to put on, that's what they're saying, post, you know, the. Post breach remediation, that's still gonna be on, on the county to say, yeah, we need to buy this, so it doesn't have likelihood, reduce the likelihood.
Any, any improvement in equipment, you gotta pick that up.
Right, right. Yeah, and then probably the other, um. One that's worth pointing out is fourth from the bottom, this bricking. I don't know where they come up with some of these terminology, but bricking basically means it, it turns, um. It reprogrammed, if our software gets reprogrammed to the point where it makes our. Server, I think that's where the term comes from, it just, now it's a brick, it's not worth use, use for anything. So the, the cost to actually replace a software to make the system run again after it's been reprogrammed, I guess that's where they say. Either keep backup copies or, um, you know, have a. A maintenance agreement in place where they can reload the software for you or whatever, so you're not, they're not buying software again if it gets. Reprogrammed in some certain way. So those would be the, the bigger points of no coverage, but otherwise, yeah, you've got your third party taking care of any constituents. That might have, uh, been breached and have their data floating around and then all, all of our first party stuff that, that is listed there.
I mean, cyber crime, that rate, it's only going at fifty thousand dollars with the, this is the policy, or is.
Well, it's, yeah, so the underlying would be a hundred thousand and then the excess would provide another hundred and fifty, so it gets. Yep.
That's fine, of course.
Yeah, the annual aggregate, what that means, you see on that side is, is, um. The, the excess would provide annually a hundred and fifty and then the base policy provides annually a hundred and fifty. So the combination would be two fifty there. Everything else gets you up to a million, pretty much.
I was gonna have Chris come up and look through this.
Yeah, yeah, you can certainly. Have him look it over and then let me know. There's any additional questions, one way or the other.
Is there any program, policy, you know, insurance is gonna go off, everything does. Is there anything we can do to preempt, anything going up like new, uh, programs or? Anything we can do?
Why we have Chris, that's why we hide it some of this.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, from ICAP's perspective, um. There isn't a whole lot of questions, so every year when, starting about. Late April, early May, when we're approaching the seven-one renewal date, they send out a renewal questionnaire packet. And there really isn't a lot of extensive questions related to this, so I'm, I'm not sure, other than. Using his expertise to mitigate a claim, you know, that's probably the biggest thing is keeping away from claims because you know that's gonna. Probably be a surcharge coming down the road if we have something there, but as far as them giving a credit or something, I think they rely on. Uh, we're, we're doing, yeah, we're doing the right things, I think.
And that was one of the main reasons why we did decide to hire an IT person, not only to keep our software all straight, but to look at what our. Liabilities are and where we. What we do and he's done a really good job for that. He, he did look at this last week and said this was a good. You know, a good thing to, like he said, and we all know, knew that too, two hundred and fifty thousand wasn't gonna get as much if something did happen.
Yeah.
Hopefully it never will, but.
And I think what it points to too is I think a lot of counties, um, have done what we have done as far as hiring a dedicated person. Because I, I don't think they would just randomly offer a million dollars to. Um, the, the counties just, they know there isn't some safeguards, so, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna make that motion to approve an increase in cybersecurity coverage with Abens, Marty.
Well, second, there's a first and a second, any more discussion? Know that ISA has a group that they all go to and they communicate a lot with each other, so it's, uh.
Yeah, they have their own little chat room and everything, so they all talk and.
Yep.
But we went from the bottom at two fif- two hundred and fifty to the million is, is as high as we can go, right?
So, yeah, that's all they've offered.
That's all they've offered, so we, we have the coverage that they are, are offering, so that.
And that.
And improve them.
Yes.
And that additional, um, incremental cost was twenty-three. I can't remember exactly the number, I should have brought that with me, but we discussed that last week.
The number we saved.
Gonna be under what we paid last year.
Right, yeah. Correct.
So, we're still under what we paid last year.
Okay, now, we have a first, second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved.
Okay, I'll let ICAP know, we'll go ahead and get that changed, other, otherwise, everything we discussed last week is in motion, so.
Well, I designed anything for that or?
No, nope, it'll just be a request, uh, I'll let them know and then I'll get Trish. The departmental breakouts and, and, uh, so everybody can have the fun job of writing their checks, I guess, so.
Can you explain the insurance for our nonprofit, what we can or can't do, or? Is there another company or your company that write insurance on our, on our nonprofit if we're. Working on the dam or in the dam area?
Well, you start, have that conversation in the hall, cause it's not on our agenda, if you don't like.
I would, I would have had it earlier.
Yeah, I'm, well, I don't know if we should, I don't wanna put you on the spot.
Well, I mean, I, I can certainly offer what ICAP's initial response, I know I've talked to, uh. Bruce about getting something formally back. But I can at least share that part of it, um, with the group, so. A while back, um. Well, probably at least a year ago, when trying to find some. Options for the River Group to have some coverage, cause they're running into some roadblocks with that. One of my thoughts that I had was we could approach the county carrier ICAP with. Having the group added as an additional insured to our policy. Um, so then. The group decided, supervisors decided, let's explore that, Rick stopped in and said, you know, let's go see if we can get an answer back from ICAP. So I did, uh, talk with our underwriter that's assigned to our county. And explaining. What we're wanting to do and the, the one thing that I guess I didn't think about in this, because you know. In the industry, having additional insured doesn't, is not uncommon, um. But what he, his initial response is, is that ICAP's charter is. They are formed and designed to be a carrier for municipalities, primarily counties. And with. The, the River Development Group not being a municipality, they can't provide primary. They could, they could do an additional insured endorsement if the group already had primary coverage for their liability. For their operational liability, but simply adding them as an additional insured to provide the primary operational liability. Was outside of what the charter for ICAP is designed to do, um. He had offered to run that up, you know, the flagpole, um, and then we'll get that response back in. You, formal writing, but, and that should happen now, July first is their obviously busy time leading up to all the county renewals. And so now I think they can dedicate, he'll be able to run it up the flagpole and get something back here and we'll know a definitive. One way or the other, but that was his initial response is that he didn't think it was going to. Be able to work, uh, because of the way ICAP's charter is and not being able to provide primary coverage for the group, so. That's where it'll still have to be. Done from an outside source, at least at this point.
And the other day when I talked to Scott, I just said, when they do give that response. Could you please get it in writing so that we have the ability to give that to the dam group and say, this is. They aren't trying to remember the exact words, it's in. Written form, so we know that was what him and I talked about, so.
So that's where we're at with that part of it, and then, yeah, I can talk to you about outside sources or whatever, but. That's at least from what the supervisors would be involved in, that's.
Okay, uh, down to the committee reports, I believe.
Alright, uh, the only thing I had was. Uh, what was it, Wednesday? On Tuesday, we came up, I came up and I really didn't do a lot of helping, I wandered around out here. When the kids, uh, put the flags up and once again, we thanked them, there was what, thirty, forty kids?
A lot of them, yeah.
Running around, um.
Twenty-eight months.
Yeah, and part of that, they had to wait, cause they had to send them over for new flags, which.
Oh.
Um, reminds me that, I think, um, Dave said they haven't got all the flags covered, so if anybody's still looking for. An opportunity, they, I think there was seventy-five dollars is what he said. Um, then I had a phone call with Travis on BB plumbing on the air conditioner. It's all put back together, um, now they're working on a breaker, so. I guess my other question was, is have we heard anything from Midas yet on our?
No, they're still, they're fully staffed, finally. I'll, I'll go into that when I, my meeting this week.
Alright.
Or last week.
Well, I'm just, that was gonna get done after the first of the year and I think we need to either push them more or. Figure out something, cause. We're seven months into the year already, so. That's all I had.
Did you have a date you'd have to travel this?
Uh, I think it was.
You sent me a text.
Once the afternoon or, because we talked. Said something leads to when we were up here. And the flags go down tomorrow night. So.
Park, park.
They, yep. As long as it doesn't rain, if they're dry, they can take them down, if they get rained on, they have to, they'll even save another day to. Keep getting them dry, so.
I had no.
That's it.
You took a breath.
That's it.
I had no.
I also helped with the flags on Tuesday, put those up, it was pretty neat, I went, wet race move. And then, um, Mike and I went out to Rick Pearson's, the, uh, Reed's Pond. Looks like Rick going to there. Yeah, needs to be cleaned out, but I, it's not in our district, there's no braids district there, but.
Who's pond now? Reed's Pond, Reed's Pond.
Yeah. And it is full, isn't it?
Well, I'm afraid, you know, we're gonna run into that same scenario because the discussion we had was the pond silt to the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
You walk across it.
So, yeah.
Uh, so if you dig, dig that out. Pond's gonna be higher and it's gonna, yeah, it's just.
It's just great, a quick pond.
Yep.
Then really the only way that, we talked to this, Rick and Travis, they said they don't, real good way to do is drain it down and scraper it out. I think that'll fly very well.
Yeah, I mean. No offense, but what brought this up?
The ponding, the lack of movement in the water and that drains.
Huge pond you were thinking. Quarter of a while ago down.
In his field.
In his field.
Oh, in his field, like a mile away.
Cause that tile's really, really full, what is it?
That's outlet is the pond.
Yep, yep.
But the outlet of the pond hasn't changed, whether it's thirty feet deep or six inches deep, the outlet is still the same, so it really doesn't change.
Right.
But the level, while the, the level of silt in the pond keeps going up, which. But the level, while the the level of silt in the pond keeps going up, which if we clean this ditch out, then this is deeper and the pond isn't.
Right, so you're not much.
Well, dread unless you dredge the pond. To facilitate the water going on down.
But the but the level of the pond is determined by the outlet.
Mm-hmm, they've already dropped it where the foot, I think he said that helped a bunch, but. Um, at what point in time does that not work? So it's just something down the road, it's not in drainage district, so then the.
Right.
It's the outlet for a drainage district, but it's not in drainage district. Which is technical.
It's a.
You can.
You can address it, if it's an obstruction.
Yep.
So the pond itself is not in the drainage district, but it does drain the water, that's where it goes for the drainage district, so that it's still. Under the. What's it GD thirty five? Uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's good, well, I agree, I don't like, same thing, um. Go ahead and put flags up, and then went, let's file after that one. Um. Gilmore City's trying to trying to resurrect their to fail with it again, and. I. I guess I'll ask the board, I directed them to Midas, to to Stacy. They were, they're looking for a revolving loan fund, is that looking for a lot of loans, so I was, is that the correct place to?
Yeah, they have, they have funds, yeah.
So that's what I did, they, best thing I could do for them. Um, and that was. About it, so.
Okay, um Wednesday. I uh stopped down floor ceiling and talked to them about. Well, once we picked out, and he he ordered us a larger sample, so we can compare the two, and pick one of the two that we like. And then I went on into my Midas meeting at three thirty on Wednesday, and. Um. I guess they're fully staffed now, and I asked a question, do you have enough staff? To get the work done, because they're so far behind, so far behind. Well, we're so far behind, because we haven't had staff, so. But still.
Are you gonna get caught up?
Are they ever gonna get caught up?
Right.
I don't know. And they went through their budgets, they have funds to hire staff.
Well, then why don't we just hire at least one extra then?
I know, I suggested that, and they they seem to think they're fully staffed. So. Even though it's. It's a turtle. Down there, it moves so slow.
Did any of the other board members think that they should hire another person?
Uh, when I brought that up, I didn't get a whole lot of support. I don't know, maybe maybe I need to rattle a few more cages a little bit.
Talk to them, yeah.
Because there's lots of us that are sitting here and waiting and waiting and waiting. You know, yeah, like three pages of of uh work that needs to be done.
Wow. Because how many counties are in that?
Thirteen, I think. There's nine, nine or thirteen, can't remember exactly. But it, yeah, but you know lately, it's been, they had a gal left. Then they hire somebody, and she's on maternity leave, and then your head left, and they got temporary, and they're looking for a new director. Who, I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
You know, and there's no, hasn't been good leadership for the last quite a while, and nothing gets done.
Two, three years at least?
Yeah. So, that's what I had.
Rick, I go, um going across highway three. From the Thor corner, the drainage district or the drainage ditch on the south side, um. Be like a mile and a quarter, mile and a half. That's your area, right?
No, it's mine.
Okay, well, whoever, I can look when I go by in the semi. And it looks to me like there's either a beaver dam about. I don't know, couple hundred feet up the to the south, because the water is backed up there, but when you go. Across uh about a half mile the other east.
Cross it again.
Yeah, the water is down. But I think we have some predators that have. Late climate, because well, that water is backed up, uh it's probably several feet. Um, and under goes under the highway three there. So we might wanna, and I don't think I wanna stop there with the semi to get out. I wanna say it's uh Graspson.
Yeah, that's.
I was gonna call them and ask them, but I didn't.
Which drainage district number that is, I'll tell you, yes, so six, that's not six. Uh, because it goes to the Bill and River. Little C's to the. But there's, there's another thing we.
Oh, Joey.
When we go to remove beavers and beaver dams. We're legally supposed to talk through our conservation, get their approval before we do anything. Which we probably haven't been following sometimes.
So is the beaver or?
Because of the beavers. Well, there was a a bill that went to the governor's, or didn't quite make it to the governor's desk this year, that they were trying to make it, so we didn't have to follow. So we could get rid of rid of beavers whenever we wanted, but we're still have to follow the old law, which is we have to go to the. Conservations to get their permission before we take out.
So our conservation board, you mean, for them to get, okay.
We have to get permission from them before we take out beaver dams, our conservation officer. I I thought it said board, okay.
I really believe that they.
I could be wrong, but I think it said board, but.
They need to. Go through some of the drainage stuff that's hundreds of years old and.
Exactly.
Start changing some of the stuff that to be.
Now, this is one of the things they tried to change, and didn't quite make it.
No, but ones.
That's my opinion, I think that's something that we could lean on ISA to help do some of that stuff, but.
Everybody scared of our drainage laws.
Sure they are, I'm sure that, can you imagine how much time it's gonna take once they do, though? Time and money, and that's a lot of it, but we've been watching alone lately, and beaver is uh. Everybody wants to catch a beaver, because there's so much fat on them, so they can survive, they can do five more days if they get a beaver. On Alone, have you ever watched that show? They all wanna catch a beaver, they they're full of sap.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else we need to discuss?
Make a motion to adjourn if not.
All second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.